Phones off, please. Time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Sherry?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Wanda?
Here.
Dan?
Here.
Joe?
Here. Okay, does anybody have a reason to abstain for financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
I do not, no.
I have none. That, uh, before we take approval of agenda, of the agenda, there's a couple, quick fixes for the item ten and eleven. They were advertised for six thirty-five and six forty respectively. So if we make those changes.
Six thirty-five and six forty?
Yep, so item nine's at six thirty, ten is at six thirty-five, and item eleven is at six forty.
My only issue with that is if somebody saw it on the agenda, we'd actually be moving it sooner than. I don't know what, Deb, you're probably the best person to ask. I know it says, maybe we just better go with the later date. Cause I'd hate to do it at six thirty-five and then somebody comes at six forty-five and they said you guys went early.
I, I, my thing was that we couldn't, if it had been reversed, we couldn't vote earlier because it's been advertised at that time. But obviously, if the commission wants to, around the side of caution, you can do other things.
In between.
Yeah, that'd be my only concern because we do post it outside and I know people come and look at that and they look at it online if they didn't get the newspaper.
Right.
So that'd be my only concern with that.
And I'm fine with that. We might have trouble filling.
If we gotta take a couple minute break.
But if that's the safer thing, because I think it was advertised at six thirty-five, but then the agenda went out at six forty-five. So, alright, we can, we can leave it at this. Enter the motion.
Move to approve the agenda second.
Uh, motion in a second. Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. So the times will remain at what? At the posted agenda times. With that, I'll take, now's the time for public comment. Would anybody in the audience care to make a comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. And we'll move to item five, approval of the January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting minutes.
I'd move approval.
Is there a second?
One and I weren't here.
That's right, yep, you were.
You were here though.
He was on the.
You, you were, you were in here. You were in Mexico, right? I'll second that.
Uh, like, Don's got motion by, low second by catering for approval. Uh, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Wanda, you abstained.
And Wanda will abstain. Okay, motion passes. Claims.
I move approval of the claims.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
My, I know this is after, but my one question was for the sheriff, the fifteen thousand dollars from Motorola's. Was that for state radios? Or what was that for?
It wasn't a different grant, so I was.
Motorola Solutions.
Yeah, we have to pay for it and then we have to send the check and everything to them, or not, the copy of the check to get reimbursed for the grant.
Okay, with that, uh, we'll move to the ARPA claim.
And I believe that's just, um, PPE supplies.
Yes, I would move approval for the, uh, one thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and forty cents to be taken out of the ARPA funds.
I would second.
Motion in a second. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
One odd thing on that, do we have a accurate account of what's ARPA funds we've spent and what we have? Could we get an update?
If you want that, yep.
Just whenever you get a chance, I'm just curious at what we have left and what we've spent. Thank you.
I will.
Great, January payroll.
I'd move to approve the January payroll.
Second. Motion by Fox, second to Clemish. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We've got Juneteenth on here.
And some counties are observing and some aren't.
Just gonna ask, the state has not, um.
Decided yet. Or they haven't decided yet?
They have a bill. Yeah, there's two. There's one in the House, one in the Senate, but I think that's as, last I heard, that's as far it's, as it's gotten.
My understanding.
And the reason why I put it on is because the other auditors are, been emailing and, so I thought I'd put it on there.
So some have adopted it as a holiday, okay.
And actually, right now, when I looked at it yesterday, there was a headline on it. It had passed through the House and is on the Senate floor now. And it passed through Senate Committee, and it's gonna be on the Senate floor here pretty soon for vote, and it looks like it's gonna pass.
Correct.
It's kind of what it sounds like, so. Um, I don't know, just letting you know where it's in that, as far as the bill, but if they go, I know other people are gonna ask again later on about it too, since the state approved it. Is the county gonna approve it? And, I mean, I'll be honest, I didn't even know what Juneteenth Day was till last year. You know, but I get what it is now. I get the whole basis behind it, and I do feel the county should observe it off of that basis, so.
You, what was the last part?
I do feel we should observe it. The county should. Just.
And there's some counties even observed it last year.
For the diversification and things like that.
Going to Governor's eleventh hour.
Yeah.
State did. So, seeing if they have thoughts or feelings from commission on this.
I think we should wait to see if it passes.
Yeah.
Put it on two weeks from now because they should know by then.
I would agree with that.
Correct.
You want a formal motion?
No.
I don't think, we just won't take action at this time and we'll monitor what the state does. Think there's, that's gonna open up more discussion too, just to, the state has what? Fourteen holidays?
Well, and that said, we don't, we don't recognize Native American Day in the county and the state does, so.
Yeah, but they don't recognize the day after Thanksgiving.
No, they don't.
But traditionally, the governor.
But we took that for another day.
Yeah, right.
Traditionally, the governor.
They always give Thursday, yeah.
I mean, it's maybe not an official day, but it's tradition.
Just, uh, something to be aware of, I guess, but. Okay, so we'll monitor what the state does and we'll revisit that. Uh, we'll go to the County Rangeland Fire Protection.
I would move to approve the County Rangeland Fire Protection request for a list of individuals who are capable of approving.
Uh, with that, I'm gonna ask you to add one thing.
Of course you are.
Patty has put, uh, Jim Vlahakis on as well, at, which it's not reflected in our packet, but she's added the sheriff onto the list.
I sent it later to your guys' email this morning.
I think it makes sense having two people from the emergency management and two from the sheriff, just in case you can't get a hold of one or the other.
Well, then I will amend my motion to move to approve the County Rangeland Fire Protection Resolution Number twenty twenty-two hyphen two with the provision that they add Jim Vlahakis' current sheriff to the list.
Second.
And a second, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, item seven.
Alright, good evening. I sent out an email about this before. I spoke to all of you also previously. But I wanted to be public knowledge in front of the county also, so all the residents are aware since I am a county employee. But I did accept an appointment as the VFW State Service Officer. Um, as I had said before, that is, it's gonna give me more training. And roughly two weeks a year is what we think it's gonna take me out of the office, but that is all training time. So, um, the way I look at it is it's, it's an investment.
Paid for by somebody else.
Paid for by somebody else is the catch. The training is paid for by somebody else. So, um, I think it's gonna reflect better. I, I think it's just gonna be good for the county and just wanna make sure you're all aware, and if there's any opposition, that we take care of that, but I don't know if you need to vote necessarily for it, but I think it's more of a community awareness, so. But they will announce it tomorrow at the earliest, because we were waiting until the meeting tonight to. The state will announce it, but they wanted to wait until after the meeting tonight, just.
Sure.
Thanks for your willingness to take on the responsibility, it's a.
I've already been doing it.
Yeah.
I've already been doing it and I don't get paid anymore is the thing, but, uh, it.
It works every penny.
It, it is, but the training's worth it. That's the trade-off, so.
You got an opportunity to reach a lot of veterans that you might not reach otherwise. Good thing.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Cody. Okay, we'll move on to item eight, zoning priorities. Now, I added this on here, um, just to kind of start some discussion. There's a email. There's a few, um, items that we've discussed in the past, it's just kind of open items that it'd be nice to just kind of wrap up and, and that, I don't think we'd really see them as major changes to the ordinance, they're just kind of clerical things. Other topics we've discussed is, is, at some point, wind should be reviewed. Um, I'm not saying we drop everything and do that now, but cell towers should have some review. One thing that I would like to see done, probably with kind of the clerical stuff, is a review of all of our setbacks and then have a way to handle properties that existed prior to zoning, because we've got a lot of lots out there in commercial and ag especially, that were created prior to zoning and they're, they're essentially rendered useless because they won't meet any of the setbacks. And so I think if we look at all of our setbacks together and maybe also add a provision for lots that existed prior to, it would eliminate a lot of our, our issues in the county.
That's section sixteen oh three, non-conforming lots of record. It goes through that.
I think, I think what Joe's talking about is the issue of the variance process and having a small lot, especially in an ag area. So we did move that from seventy-five to fifty, which does remedy some of those concerns. But those variances that come in for lot lines, I have been scolded over and over for not, not approving those because I feel the approach is to revisit, um, how to handle smaller lots that are unique, especially in the ag zone. So I think that's what you're talking about on.
So, right.
Non-conforming lots, like I guess. That's, to me, that's what a variance is, is for. Are you proposing like a reduced setback on non-conforming lots only, or I guess what, what do you mean?
No, and as I've stated before, Brookings County has a way that they approach it for lots of a certain size. For example, I think their minimum lot in ag area is thirty-five. So what they do is when they created zoning, there were lots that were maybe two acres, three acres, whatever they were. So they allow those lots in order to use them more fully to have a shorter lot line setback than what a thirty-five acre lot would require. And I think that would maybe take, um, a lot of these variance requests, because again, a variance has an extremely high bar, um, because what you're doing is relaxing your ordinance. So that's how they get around, uh, the lot line issues in their county. And I don't have the page number, uh, in the ordinance, but it is in there.
Eleven, uh, dash five. And it's, uh, paragraph seven in Brookings County.
So they have a little table and they might, uh, setbacks might be half of what a normal ag zone setback would be. So instead of fifty, it might be twenty-five, and that allows them to use those lots legally, uh, without going through the variance process.
You know, I would agree that that's the proper approach to this. If we continually hear variance requests for the same item, we should address it in our, in our ordinance, and that's what our ordinance directs us to do, and you know, I know, three years ago, um, we had similar conversations and, and talked with the city and they kind of, when they did an overhaul, their goal was to address all these things, and they offer very few ordinances. They get requests for very few ordinances, and that should be our goal.
Variances.
Variance, not ordinance.
Request for few variants.
For fewer variances. What did I say? Ordinances? Oh. We get requests for few ordinances too. So I, just kind of putting it on people's radar, I think that, in my opinion, is a higher on the list that could probably be put in with our, our cleanup issues that, that we've discussed in the past.
And the, um, a couple years ago, SB one five seven, and the voting changes. Our ordinance still reflects four votes are required for CUP when state law says, uh, majority of the board. So that does need to be addressed and remedied.
Anybody else have any, well, questions, concerns, comments, things they'd like to see?
I guess I would suggest that, uh, everybody, uh, get their respective changes to Gary, and we have a list that we can present at our next meeting.
Yeah, and I would agree with that approach. I think, uh, maybe prioritize to what, you know, what we would like to see done. I think priorities, in my opinion, are ranked between two things. Importance and, and overall structure of, of our ordinances and how it might impact. You know, the higher the, the glaring issues I think should be addressed first, and then along with that, though, some of these, you know, low-hanging fruit ones that are pretty benign, we should just, just.
If I may, uh, at the district three, uh, session this past week, I talked to Greg Henderson about comprehensive plan revision, and he said he would have it to us in a week.
Okay.
Or so.
So why don't we put, put a two meetings down the road?
So, so that's good to hear. Um, I agree. I mean, there's, there's, there's some of those kind, type of issues that could be looked at. You know, we, we know, we've talked about the Highway fifty-two corridor overlay, if we wanted to do something to that, cell towers. With the, with the consultant thing is still a pretty big price out there that, that gets someone outside involved that we may want to take a look at. We have the half right-of-way issue that, that, uh, that came about during the, when the RV parks were coming in and we, we might want to take a look at that. Uh, there's, there's various rewordings that could be done too, but on the setback issue too, there's some places that go to more of a percentage of use on a lot or something too, if we wanted to go that route versus trying to come up with numbers, you know. Yeah, we've looked at that in the past. I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways to attack these things. But yeah, the comp plan will be a priority once we get that, and then, uh, FEMA actually called me and, and they want me to, um, do a subs, they're gonna give, get me some guidelines and they want me to do a substantial damage plan that, uh, they're looking, looking for us to do ever since the, the last flood. I guess they've had concerns about, we only had a handful of properties that were affected, but they seem to be concerned about it, so for future flooding, that we have something in place that we're specifically gonna go through this step, this step, this step, to make sure that we visit those homes and, and, um, go through, that they go through the proper permitting and things like that, so that'll be done hopefully this year and, and, uh, but, you know, just things that have came about the last couple of years since I've been here, where the wording should just be changed to make it a little more clear. Sometimes you look at some of those paragraphs or a heading or, or something, and it probably should be worded a little different, but yeah, it just depends on which direction you want to go and what, which ones you want to tackle first.
Well, I guess if anyone has input or wants input, um, I don't think they have to be too in-depth, but jot down kind of what, what we might want to tackle and prioritize, and we can compile something together at the next meeting. And, uh.
I, I'd really like to see kind of an emphasis on, you know, deregulation for certain, uh, lots. And just an emphasis on making it easier to build a home and start a business. You know, looking at our lot size, for example, you know, R three is twenty thousand or a half an acre. Well, twenty thousand square feet is not a half an acre. A half an acre is twenty-one seven, so what, which is it? Is it twenty thousand or twenty-one thousand seven hundred and eighty? The minimum lot size according to D A N R, I believe, is twenty thousand acres for a septic field. So, one thing we could do is just leave it at the lower number, the twenty thousand. R two is forty thousand, because, you know, R two is one acre or forty thousand, it says, but they are not the same thing.
I think a lot of that was put in because a lot of those lots were done pre-ordinance, and so that's why they had the smaller sizes already and they were trying to cover some of that a little bit.
You know.
Well, you never have four, let's say you took a forty and developed it, you're not gonna have forty-one acre lots because you got roads and
Yeah.
The forty wasn't forty to start with, you know, and.
So, so my thought is make it the smaller of the two. I mean, it can always be bigger, but, you know, basically, you know, what it, what it says, says now is, you know, it needs to be forty, uh, one acre or forty thousand square feet, which is, isn't the same thing, so.
That's one of the issues that's came up recently again too, is that there's, there's a couple people that have forty acres except when they lessen the right-of-way, so they can't make it into two twenties because the right-of-way's, they lose two, three acres minimum, and, and so that does cause issues sometimes for people.
I'd also like to look at commercial properties. Currently, we're at two acres, which we're seeing a lot of smaller operations, firework stands, a lot of, uh, medical marijuana shops, gas stations, especially with property skyrocketing value, uh, lake areas and those places. I think two acres is maybe too big for some of those. I, I'd like to go something like Lakeside Commercial down to, you know, an acre or maybe even a half acre, I think would be more appropriate for some of those, and that, that could help us get more small businesses, uh, in. It certainly be bigger.
Won't that cause problems with drain fields?
Not if it meets the minimum lot size of twenty thousand square foot, so.
Yeah, at a half an acre, but don't you need an acre now?
No, twenty thousand square foot is what I'm, what I, no, was what the requirement from D E N R or D A N R is. So it's twenty thousand square foot, not, not a half an acre, which is different, but, you know, and that's, that's something that the business owner, the developer, I mean, that's something they're gonna have to consider is what they're gonna do. A small fireworks stand is gonna have a different requirement than a car wash, obviously. But at least it gives options to those.
I want to change my recommendation that we started with. Instead of bringing the requests at the next meeting, why don't you for, why don't you forward them to Gary and Gary and I will get started and prioritize, and we'll bring two or three of them to you at a time to discuss rather than, uh.
Shotgun and a whole bunch of ones.
On the flip side of that, we also got to be careful though, if you get too small with our, all our flood zone areas, sometimes it makes those lots unbuildable at that point too. If you go to half acre, acre and half of it's underwater, could be underwater, so.
Well, I think from my standpoint, the east, you know, East Highway fifty, that area, there's a lot, that's all been platted out with these small lot sizes, but it's own commercial. So they can't, and variances in the past have been granted for some of those businesses. There was one, two years ago, that was denied for a storage shed.
Going east or west?
East. By the old, uh, Yankton Motor Company. And so, there's really, since I've been, you know, here, there hasn't been any rhyme or reason to what has been granted a variance and what hasn't, and so I'd like to just eliminate that altogether, make those lots usable. But anyway. Any more closing comments? We'll wrap up. Uh, we got about a minute and a half and we can go on to the next item. Send, uh, your prioritized requests to Gary and he can work with Don to get those into the discussion format. We gotta wait one minute for you guys. Clock's still on?
It's off like eight minutes.
Okay, I've got time being six thirty. We'll move to item nine, Holst. Okay, I've got time being six thirty. We'll move to item nine, horse conditional use permit.
Make a motion to go into board of adjustment.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in board of adjustment. Appreciate that. Okay, do you two like to step forward and just give us an overview of what you're applying for?
Hi, my name's Andy Hall. We're applying for a sort of variance.
Conditionally.
Conditional use permit for to have a few horses on our land out west of town. I think the lot size, I think you guys have it on there. It's 20 some, 30 some, 20 some acres.
Low density residential right now. So we're looking for hobby farm essentially. Questions from the board or the applicant?
Well, I guess Andy, I'm looking at at planning zoning's responses and it says five horses.
That's what they approved at the last meeting.
So we're not talking about a few. It's five, not 15 or 20.
Yeah, they put a limitation, I believe, on the
Okay.
Application.
Limited to five.
Thank you.
On 23 acres.
Why was the limit placed down?
Pardon?
Why was the limit placed down there?
I missed that meeting. So Gary.
Gary, is there a reason?
I think it was based on some of the neighbors' comments and things. And this is something that I I know that back in 2015 that they did with one of the properties too, with farmers where they said four horses and it was only good for the current owner. If you wanted to go that direction.
Because under hobby farms, we should, they're allowed one animal unit per acre.
So they could have 23.
Two horses, two ones. So half that, 11 and a half. Oh, is that right? Yeah.
Two per acre. Yeah. Oh.
But.
One of the neighbors across the street had expressed concern that we would do like a more of a commercial operation. So they wanted to make sure that there was some type of limit on there. So that's what they recommended based on the property to the north of us. And we said we'd be willing to abide by any of the conditions that the planning and zoning had recommended. So that's what came up.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure we did that definition.
I don't believe so because we couldn't take it out.
Not a commercial horse feeding operation.
No. No. It, some of it is.
Yeah. So you hardly would ever see.
Pardon me?
You may hardly ever see the horses.
That's correct.
On the road or any place. It's pretty.
Yeah. And yeah, lots of timber, but enough grass for them to.
That's not an issue, though, to limit to five.
To limit to five?
Yeah.
No, I mean, I wouldn't. I don't even think I want five. I think my only issue is what if I want a couple of chickens, but I mean, if if it can, if we can only have horses, we can only have horses. So I didn't want to ruffle any feathers.
Was that Gary? Was that the intent? Do you remember that it was limited to horses or just no more than five horses, but you could still have chickens or?
No, I, from what I was told, I feel is that that was part of the condition, too, was that no other animals. And that's what they did with farmers in 2015, too, is that they limited to horses.
Do you, do you live out there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So one of the concerns that was brought up was, I guess, the neighbor to the north wanted, they were going to maybe bring in a bunch of goats or whatever. I don't know. We didn't live there at the time.
Sheep.
Sheep. So the the neighbors were concerned about what type of animals and how many animals and all that.
So the the definition says the raising and feeding of livestock and poultry shall be considered as part of a hobby farm if the area in which the livestock or poultry is kept is one acre or more in area for every one animal unit. And if such livestock does not exceed 10 animal units. So the definition of a hobby farm limits you to 10 animal units anyway.
Correct.
Which would be five horses.
Sure.
So.
But you could have two horses and chickens.
Three chickens.
It it says in here, though, it's limited to five horses. So I I guess I would be fine with eliminating that condition because the definition already puts her at that. And that way she can have she wants to get a a chicken later. She doesn't have to come back here.
So it's so.
That's that's how I'd want to do. That makes more sense.
Right. So.
Instead of having that condition of.
Let's put a pin. Let's put a pin in that. Is there any other questions regarding the application? We'll take public comment and then we'll finish that discussion up here. Anymore? Okay, with that, have a seat, please, and we'll would anybody in the audience care to make public comment on the application in front of us? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. We'll bring it back to the board for discussion.
So instead of it saying limited to five horses, should that say limited to 10 animal units?
The definition already says that. Seems redundant to me to add something that the definition already states.
But nobody knew that until they looked up the definition sitting here. So sometimes it's easier to just go ahead and insert it there to.
I think we should say 10 animal units and just be done with it.
So then.
That we can have some chickens too.
You could have two horses and a few chickens on that. So did you want me to walk through these or you want to go ahead and read through these?
I can. Yeah, I can read through these. So I'm going to go through the findings of fact from from the planning and zoning hearing. So we're looking for a conditional use for hobby farm, low density residential district. Mailings were out. They attended the public hearing. The recommendation was to approve 5-0 with the five horses stipulated on there. Ingress, egress, exists. Parking, refuse, utilities, screening and buffering signs were not required. There's it sits on 23 acres, so they would be capped at the 10, 10 animal units. And it's in general compatibility with the surrounding properties.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the conditional use permit not to exceed 10 animal units.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Dan?
Yes.
Wanda?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes.
Congratulations.
There's a couple of saddles on Facebook I saw the other day. You might start looking.
Maybe a llama.
You're welcome. Mr. Lang, we have to wait about six minutes for you. The publication time is 6:45. So we have to buy, buy, buy that. And the rezone for Ershman will be 6:50 will be the soonest we can hear that one.
Commissioner updates.
So, yeah, we will.
We're in board of adjustment right now. So he needs to get a drink.
Could go out and in.
Or exact. We've got a little over five minutes, so we can do up. We can.
Take a five minute break. Make a motion for five minute break.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
We are now in recess for five minutes. Six.
On there, there should be a little.
Rebutting with one I.
So, thank you.
Uh, Neil Wang. Just a building permit for, I got a building permit for the building. And then actually, I got home after that first meeting. And if I put a stem wall in, I could uh gain quite a bit more building and would, you know, wouldn't cost. So I'm back here again.
Okay, I was gonna say, I thought we did this already, but.
Yeah, it's a lean to on the building that I had, have the permit for.
Sure.
So.
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
I never have too much space, can you?
No.
Okay, with that, so you can have a seat and we'll open up for public comment and. Anybody in the audience care to make public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, we'll bring it back to the board for discussion. I think I'll quickly go through findings of fact. Requirements of seventeen twenty-three are met, um, and twenty-nine are met. The applicant wishes to modify a CUP to add an accessory structure per Article eleven, section eleven oh seven, mailings were, went out. Public hearing was attended. It was recommended for approval five oh from the planning and zoning. This is a modification to an existing campground.
Are we, are, you said CUP modification, aren't we using the, it's just a new CUP? That's taking over the other one? I think, I think that's kind of what we, we just say on these.
Semantics.
Yeah, I would agree.
So it's, it's an existing camp, he has a CUP for an existing campground or like to add a, a building, so ingress, egress exists, parking, refuse, utilities, um, screen buffering signs, et cetera, are all remaining the same. And that it fits the general compatibility with the surrounding properties. So if that, is there any more discussion at the board level?
Makes sense.
So with that, I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move to approve the uh modification and or condi- new conditional use permit, however you want to look at it.
The new conditional, I'll second the new conditional use permit.
Motion, a second, further discussion. Roll call vote, please, Patty.
Wanda?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes. Motion passes. Yep, take care.
Good luck.
Thank you. I'd entertain a motion to go back into regular session.
So moved.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion, a second, to go back into regular session, further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now in regular session. We've got about two minutes before we move into the rezone. Okay, time being six fifty, we will hear item eleven. I will have the first reading um for Erschman Holdings LLC rezone. Gary, do you wanna?
This is the first reading for applicant wishes to rezone from commercial and ag to commercial per Article eighteen, section eighteen oh nine and Article twenty, section twenty oh three. Said property is legally described as track B in the south half, the southwest quarter of section thirty-three, township ninety-four north, range fifty-six west. Of the fifth principal Meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, E nine one one, address is forty-four hundred west thirty-first, Yankton, South Dakota.
And would you like to speak on behalf of the Erschman?
Good evening. I'm Eric Taylor with Erschman. And what we're requesting is we decided to replot our land. And so where we have commercial and also into ag, it was brought in before as applied and was rejected by county commission as dual zone and you preferred to have it to be commercial, so we've gone through the planning board to go through, to get this redone to be all, the smaller section to be all commercial. That in the new plot that we're doing. So we have been at our facility since nineteen ninety-two, so we've been at our facility for over thirty years on that same land. And forty acres search the west coast have always been in that. So we're just making it so, going from the dual zone to a single zone area.
Correct. If they have questions for the applicant.
So do you have any intention to put up some new manufacturing plant there?
We don't at this time, we understand if we need to, that we'll have to go back through the process of getting a conditional use permit and which we'll do at that time. At this time, no, actually, starting to pick up again, it's been interesting with steel prices being highs that they have been, that the industry's been a little bit slow, they are a roller coaster and they're starting to pick up with the broadband into the wireless internet and also our cell phones, of course. So at this time, no, we do not, we have two buildings are in the ag area, they are completely storage. And that's what they're going to remain, but we've got plain manufacturing space at this time, but again, to be proper, if we do decide that we need to, we understand that we have to go get a conditional use permit to convert over to light industrial.
So you said you've been before the commission before to ask for a rezone, did I?
It was, the plot was done and it was rejected as a dual zone, the north part of it was ag, there was a line.
I see.
Doing existing, yes.
It was a plat, you weren't asking for a rezone, you were asking for a plat. That's why I wanted.
And it was rejected. So then, now we're back to rezon that part to be in compliance, to be all commercialized, requested.
And that's just the part to the directly north of the.
That is correct, that's a small part, just directly to the north.
And there was ag and they wanted to plat it and it didn't meet the twenty acre requirement, right? And there was no hope of getting a variance, so this is really his only option.
Great. Any other questions at this time?
Have you talked to the Woodells?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Well, I think um with that, I think we're done with questions, so you can have a seat.
Thank you.
Take public comment on it, so, thank you. Anybody care to make a public comment on this rezone application?
I am Edward, this is my brother Elliot, who's an engineer and I don't understand what they're trying to get commercial, are they just trying to do the part behind them? Or they're trying to take the whole.
Could we pull up the map and show him?
Yeah. You know, I live right next door and so does my other neighbors. And we don't want that to be turned into commercial property, they could put a truck stop there, they could put a packing house. You know, and I can, I can. I think this is the third time we've been here over this.
Um, Mike, I guess one of the things we need to understand is this rezoning isn't just for the four hundred and fifty foot wide strip right up here. Yes, we've seen this before in the, the area directly west of what they're, the new part that they added is, as I understand, a wetland or a slough, but trying to verify exactly what's going to be changed. Last, last, uh, three weeks ago when we were here, we were told, no, that farmland to the west of the manufacturing facility has no intention of ever becoming industrial, commercial or anything else, but then this comes right back out three weeks later. And we're trying to, trying to make sure that uh what is farmland remains farmland.
Right.
That area to the west. We, we, yeah, where the arrow, where the, where the arrow is, it's our concern that that remain farmland. You've got uh literally three homes involved in this same parcel.
But this is my place here and my neighbor's right behind me. And the other place I think he's talking about is right here, yep.
So, yeah, and I think, I think we can, I'm trying to find that plot, was that January fourth meeting?
Uh, it's calls it track day on this survey here.
Okay.
You know, they just want the two acres behind it, that's fine.
And that's, that's what.
That doesn't bother me, but when they start talking about making the whole thing commercial, then they can build.
Sure. So how this, how this started Ed, was they, they came to replat that part straight, straight north?
So that this is the area we're talking about, and that's exactly straight north, that's the only area that would move to.
That ain't, that ain't the way it reads in the letter that we got commercials.
Hey, I don't know what you received commercials.
We, um, you know, the uh, there's, there seems to be a lot of confusion in the correspondence goes around here. We're trying to make sure, um, you know, I, I've tried to look at your, your zoning, your planning and zoning ordinances online. And I can't tell you what kind of a setback is required from what, on a county basis? And that's pretty important, guys. It really is important because, you know, um, when we were putting this letter together here, you know, one of the things that we look at when we're working with planning and zoning is to try to keep the county or city moving forward without destroying the neighborhood, the changes are being made in. And without any knowledge of what is possible uh without any real communication. We really can't say this is a good thing or a bad thing for the public or for the people who live there. So that's, that's why we're here again, and, you know, we really don't want to have to attend a county board of supervisors meetings, last time we were here, they said, well, this was only planted and done because the supervisors requested it.
So what?
That was one of the comments made, so.
Let me interject for a second, what was, what happened is they came forward to, to plot off that northern part, to just straight north of their building.
Yes.
They, they had a replot just for that. Well, that replot does not fit the zoning ordinance because you have to have twenty acres minimum. And so we asked that they asked, applied a rezone just that north portion. So that'll be zoned commercial, just like the rest of their building.
Does that make twenty acres for them?
And then it'll, it'll be added, so the replat will add all that into one plot, one piece, and then all of the ag land that remains to the west will, will be a separate platted piece and a remain ag land, okay?
That's what's, that's why we're here.
Yep, and that's, that's what.
We're not here to try to make things more difficult for anybody, but at the same time, we're trying to protect the value of the properties that are on the west edge of what they own.
Now, as Joe explained it to you, is that acceptable?
Yeah. Yep.
Okay.
And so what, what's gonna happen is this is a first re, first hearing, first reading of this proposed change. To go into effect, it'll be on the next agenda item, it'll be for a second reading, but it'll be the same thing. We'll take, nothing will change, we'll take public comment again, and then we'll take action at that time.
Okay.
But that, that is what the request is, is.
I'm satisfied with that, but from the paper that I got in commercial, it looked like they wanted to put the whole thing.
Then I got the letter that you got right here, and your notice was that whole area, cause that's one big plot right now. And that includes that area, but he's just one step corner.
As long as that's what it is. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment on this application? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. There any more discussion, if not, we'll close it for the item for this time and wait for the second hearing. Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that, this is probably a case where, you know, a variance would have been the simpler solution to.
I disagree.
With that, we'll move on, uh, public comment in general, anybody care to make public comment on, on uh any open topic? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed, we will move on to commissioner updates.
Well, this past week I attended the district uh three uh meeting at Mitchell, uh, and I, I, I think it was primarily uh about how we spend the government funds and so forth, there were a few other issues that were involved, but uh, there wasn't anything uh new and earth shaking there. Last Thursday and Friday, I attended a thrive workforce development meeting. And Friday I attended a thrive housing development, development meeting, and what, what thrive is, is trying to do, they have a capital fund drive uh coming up in the, in the next few months, and they're trying to uh identify and convey to the public uh what, what goals and objectives that they have in, in the area of housing development and, and the workforce uh development. And then uh this morning I attended uh human service center meeting and uh they, uh, they're implementing some new uh programs, I think, designed around the security and uh training for the staff out there, uh, didn't talk uh anything much about the issues of numbers of, of clients that they have there or anything else, but uh those were the main things covered in that.
Thank you, Don.
There is an email sent out on a transportation study, this, I think the last time we did that was twenty fourteen, was it earlier than that? That sounds right.
Right around there.
Somewhere in there, um, and it was for the whole county. And I do agree with Gary and Mike did chime in that um, maybe we should look at doing a specific study around the west area out here, we're starting to get some challenges with Dear Boulevard, I shouldn't say starting to get challenges, I think the challenges are already there. And I see Timberland Drive is probably joining in that long term, connecting on the south side between those roads, et cetera. So it may be worth our effort to put in for one of those grants, I think they're an eighty twenty.
Yes.
I remember right, um, and to invest a few dollars into getting a good plan to develop that. The state's saying they're gonna start limiting access to highway fifty-two, so there'll be more frontage roads, we've just gotten talking about plating and making sure the right of way is accessible before we start developing and um, it's, it's probably a, a dollars well, well spent, so I have already asked Gary and Mike to kind of work together to put something, uh, cause I think the deadline's March first.
Yeah, they don't make you a whole lot of time.
So at the next meeting, we'll hopefully have something to review and put our application in, doesn't mean we're gonna get approval for it, but I think it is worthwhile to try that this year. Friday, we have JD AI updates from our uh point person on that, and I think they're doing some interviews this week on that. January, uh, January, February twenty-fifth is a reschedule of that supervisory training that was in January. I, I called it off because of our challenges with COVID and, and not wanting to have a chicken pox party and pass it around to everybody. Um, so that has been rescheduled to Friday, February twenty-fifth. So that's my update.
One, anything? Dan?
Yeah, um, got some comments uh for that state radio grant we gave, and there was some concern as to why we were paying uh the city of Yankton close to twenty thousand dollars, and that, I voted against it, I tend to agree that it was probably not in our best interest to do that, but it's spent anyway. But there was some concern about that, uh, why are we buying the police department state radios when, you know, their budget is five times what ours is? Uh, there is a chance that there may be some funding available for that state radio program from um what I have heard. Uh, and I'll keep you guys updated on that, uh, at least uh some of the bills that um, hopefully we pay attention to HB ten fifty-three. Authorized counties to issue bonds for expenditure by a gross uh receipt tax that's being heard on Thursday, as well as uh HB ten forty-five sales tax on medical marijuana to go to the counties, both of those are being presented by Representative Ernie Otten. Those are the main ones. There's another one, I guess, uh, what is it, HB, HB ten eighty-three is a good one, and that provides partial property tax exemption for the survivor of a spouse of a veteran that gets DIC. So those are the ones uh that are probably important for us right now. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. I spoke with Jesse Bailey with Pathways a week or two ago, um, just kind of an update, just to fill everybody in, they started a I believe it's called Unite Us, and I asked him at some point to maybe come here and, and explain it, but um, I'll give a stab at it, I'll try. I'll get close, but it's essentially a uh an electronic system, kind of a passport system within our community, and so if somebody comes to, let's say, him requesting services services that, that the individual or family may need would be identified and put into this account or passport. And that's gonna be shared with like the contact centers involved with that, so they'll know what that conversation was, or what, what this individual, what kind of resources they would be requesting or needing. And so all of these entities that are part of this will be able to see each unique individual's requests and what they're approved for, and you know, hopefully um kind of close some gaps, I guess, and close the loop on things, it'll identify, let's say somebody requested uh rent assistance and they got sent to such and such place for rent assistance and they never showed up. Are they, you know, I think they want to use that to, to check back what happened with this individual, that, do you not need it anymore? Does, do you need different assistance, whatever, and vice versa, if somebody's requesting the same the same assistance from multiple entities, um, you know, the intent is to figure out, okay, what? Did we miss something, or it, why, why are you requesting the same thing from, from different entities and try to you know, reduce some of the overlap and make that process a little more efficient, I guess?
Joe?
Unite Us. And it was, it's a software, I don't remember who he said developed it, it's free. And it was, it's a software, I don't remember who he said developed it, it's free, essentially free to the nonprofits to use, and so there's a, quite a few entities that are, that are using it as part of that system, and I think they're looking to, you know, hopefully get everybody, as many people as they can to, to utilize that to kind of track people within the community. That's all I have. So with that, I'd entertain a motion to go into an executive session for personnel issues pursuant to South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two, sub paragraph one, and core relief issues pursuant to South Dakota codified law one dash twenty-five dash two and twenty-eight dash thirteen and twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point three.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion by Fox, second by Los, further discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in executive session. Hey, what, phones on?
I'll move to come out of the executive session.
Second. Motion by Los, second by Kettering, come out of the executive session, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're now back into regular session.
So I'd make a motion to approve a new job description. The title is legal administrator, poor relief diversion, civil litigation, victim services, it will be a grade seven, and to advertise, approve to advertise.
Second.
Motion to approve a new job description and advertise for, for legal assistant, although, further discussion.
I think it's, want to make it clear, is that we're not adding a new position, but this is going from a clerk to this.
Think we're renaming it.
Yeah, it renamed, not adding employee, but updating a job description to accurately reflect what they do.
Correct, thank you.
Good, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
I would move to a pen, to pen, poor relief cases twenty-two dash twelve, twenty-one dash oh seven, twenty-one dash oh eight, twenty-two dash thirteen through twenty-two dash twenty pursuant to S D C L twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-four point two. In addition to twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirty-three, sub two, S D C L twenty-two, I'm sorry. In addition, S D C L twenty-eight dash thirteen sub three, and S D C L twenty-eight dash thirteen dash thirteen foot one sub one. And in addition, S D C L twenty-eight dash thirteen dash one point one, and S D C L twenty-eight dash thirteen dash twenty-seven sub six sub A.
I'll second.
Yeah, motion and a second to
I'm good.
Pen for relief cases as stated. Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Any items for the next meeting?
The you have transport, transportation study grant, and Bailey, I'll get you the name of what that'll be. Did we need the zoning?
Well, I think we're, we're like six, six months from buzzing, kind of. I, I think it'd be a decent idea to have ask each of the organizations that we donate, provide funds for, to attend a meeting and give us a ten minute presentation on what's going, what, what they've accomplished.
Where, where the funds that we give them go to and, yeah, what they've accomplished.
So that could probably happen this month, next month, maybe into April sometime, they don't all have to be at the next meeting.
No.
That, okay.
Not all at one time.
No, I'd only look for a couple of, of time.
Yeah.
So for that, are you thinking like library included, or? Yeah, cause we would, we would do.
Me, building.
Boy, me, Boys and Girls Club.
Yep.
That's, that me building is his.
Contact center.
That they come in.
Yep. Contact Center, Pathways.
I think we'd send out a letter, perhaps addressing all of them in the same letter, and if they don't come and set up an appointment, the likelihood of getting funds is gonna be
diminished.
Diminished.
And I don't know if, you know, we give the behavioral health.
I'm sorry, I can't.
Yep.
Behavioral health.
Yep.
Okay.
And I've got a list at home.
I guess I also did attend the Lewis and Clark Board Meeting, probably three of them since the last month or so on. They are proceeding, pursuing, going forward.
Somebody, I can do it, I'm not the most elegant writer, but someone want to pen up?
Oh, I can draft up a letter, that'll take a minute.
Yeah, just something we would like you to come speak and blah, 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 blah. Generic, and then.
And they can, she can just send it out to each of them.
Yep.
Okay.
It's one of those things I can do.
What do we decide on zoning, do we want to wait a meeting or two?
I'm gonna give our ideas to.
I thought Gary and Don were gonna get all of this together and do it in like a month.
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say.
Not next meeting?
Not the next meeting, cause people won't get everything in.
Yeah.
Probably, yeah. We need a reminder that they need to do it.
Yep.
That'd be March first, would be our first meeting in March, maybe.
Correct.
I have a question, why when somebody applies for something and it's in the newspaper, it says applicant? How come it doesn't say Don Kettering has applied for a? I mean, when they do a liquor license to transfer, they say Joe's transferring it to Sherry, why don't they say who that's applicant is, so people don't have to go look up a legal description?
I don't know why that is. The man who knows left.
Well, I asked Conkling, and Conkling said that's just the way it's always been.
That's our favorite line.
Reason, right?
That's our favorite line here.
Okay, any more items? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Is that why?
Aye.
Yeah, Wanda, give it to Wanda.
Any opposed? Motion passes, we are now adjourned.